6:30 PM and have achieved quorum for the Planning Board. I call the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting of October, was it the sixteenth? Seventeenth? Seventeenth to order. The meeting is being video recorded. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the podium when called upon and speak slowly and clearly into the microphone. Speakers must be, speakers must start by identifying themselves with their name and address for the record. All hearings must be open at a time certain. We don't need that. I think that's good. All right, so the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for 121 Spring Street ICD Realty Trust, and we received a letter from engineer Larry Silva. Gene would read that into the record.
To the Planning Board, Town of Bridgewater, regarding 121 Spring Street. Dear Board Members, on behalf of our client, Silva Engineering Associates, would like to respectfully request to withdraw without prejudice the application submitted for this project. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Lawrence P. Silva, Silva Engineering.
Is there anybody from the public that's here to speak on 121 Spring Street? Is there any board comments or questions about 121 Spring Street? Do we have a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
I'll make the motion to accept the withdrawal for 121 Spring Street without prejudice.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so there isn't a posted agenda, but we have a couple of quick things that have been continued from prior meetings, so we'll start with Mr. Castanetti if you want to come up. And Elijah, if you want to just, Jennifer, if you want to just update the board. We do have, we do have some correspondence from the Planning Office on this.
Sure, I can just update you briefly. At a previous meeting, Mr. Castanetti had requested lot releases for several lots at the Bridgewater Preserve. At the time, there was discovered some issue regarding, or we thought there was an issue regarding the individual lots that were already occupied with their drainage. The board requested, that had been resolved, but the board requested that ASBILs for those lots be provided. I believe in front of the chairman is the stack of ASBILs. They've been reviewed by the town engineer. He's satisfied with them, so I think we're ready to release the remaining lots at the Bridgewater Preserve.
And the bond has been posted and is adequate?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion on this? Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Castanetti?
Yes, no, the plans going forward, all of the plans since then have also, the septic design plans have included a, in the ASBILs have included the roof runoff drainage systems as well.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question. The lots listed, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, thirty-eight R., and thirty-nine R. are the same ones that were discussed at the last time?
Those were the ones that were withheld, yes, except ninety was, that was a mistake. I had subsequently submitted to the Planning Department a revised release-
Ninety has already been released.
Release form, ninety had been released with the original group.
Okay, and we have a copy, we have a copy of the release form here, correct?
Yes.
And you need three signatures on that?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the lot release? Do we have a motion on the lot release?
I'll make a motion to release lots eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine. Ninety's already been released, thirty-eight R. and thirty-nine R.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks very much, and thank you for the accommodation, taking me out of order. I greatly appreciate that.
No problem. And then we have, we have another, here, we have another request that was continued from another meeting. I see Mrs. Letola here now, so let me see, we do have a request from Miss Letola. That's her request there.
Paulo Letola, 640 Auburn Street.
And we'll just read the request in, if you don't mind, and then go ahead.
Just the top page?
Yeah, Miss Letola's letting us sign.
Okay. Dated August thirtieth, twenty eighteen, to the Bridgewater Planning Board, Pat Driscoll, Chairman, Letola Homes, Inc., and Five P. Forrester Real Estate Trust are requesting a two-year extension for Phase One of Old Field Estates. Thank you for your attention to this request, Paulo Letola, Treasurer.
And this is from Planning?
Public Meeting Subdivision Extension Request, Letola Homes, Inc., Old Field Estates, Phase One. The Board approved the subdivision on January fourth, twenty seventeen. The extension would move the expiration date from January fourth, twenty nineteen, to January fourth, twenty twenty-one. The Department sees no issue with the request and recommends the request be granted.
Is there any, anything you want to add, Miss Letola?
No.
Do we have any questions for Miss Letola?
I just, what is the reason?
Because we're, we're a small business. We build a few houses a year and we're not built out, so we need an extension.
Any other discussion, questions for Miss Letola, why she's here? Anything from your office, in addition to what you wrote, Elijah?
No, nothing on my end.
All right, so do we have a motion to grant the two-year extension to Letola Homes? And I believe we just released these lots in January, so the bond is probably sufficient anyway.
This time, yes.
So, do we have a motion to grant the two-year extension to Old Field Estates, Phase One?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for two years.
And just, and that'll go to January first, January-
Fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Tony here for Mike? Do you want to, we can, you're continued as well from the last meeting, so if you want to come up.
Tony DeFries from Michael Koskinn Associates represent Mr. Gabriel on the A&R for Fireworks Circle that you have before you. I believe the last time that was here, about two weeks ago, that showed a five-foot wide strip along Bedford Street, and he has increased it to twenty feet wide, and also it's just going to be its own parcel. It's not going to be combined with the piece to the north, which was owned by, I believe, Fabrowski. And those are the changes.
So we have some correspondence from Planning on this as well?
Okay, the Public Meeting, A&R, Pat Corporation, Fireworks Circle slash Bedford Street. The plan has since been amended to reflect the concerns raised by the Department. The new plan shows the lot under separate ownership will not be included. The plan meets the criteria for signature, and a decision is due no later than ten seventeen. The Department recommends signing the A&R.
Elijah or Jennifer, is there any you'd like to add?
No.
This is adequate, the way it's listed now, and that dotted line is-
Yeah, yes, because he's labeled it a parcel, it's not buildable, I believe, right yet, not a buildable lot, so he's all set.
Give everybody a chance to look at it. And Tony, just for everybody's benefit, you're combining these two lots-
Correct.
-and cutting a piece off, so you're actually making the lot, lot bigger than it was.
Yes.
This is the one, I think Elijah sent it in the pack as well. Does anybody have any questions on it? So do we have a motion to endorse the A&R Plan for Fireworks Circle?
Let's go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up for board business, we have a minor modification for Mike Shea's Coffee House. And if, we've received a couple of plans for this. Come on up, sir. And we did receive the fees, Liz.
Good morning, Mike Shea.
How you doing?
Good night, good evening.
So why don't we just read the, we did receive one plan, and if you want to read the correspondence in from Planning, Gene, that'd be great.
Public Meeting, Special Permit Minor Modification Request, Mike Shea's Coffee House Traditional's, Inc., Thirty-first Street. The applicant has six hundred and twenty-five square feet of commercial space, which will require four parking spaces. The applicant has provided a parking plan with twenty-eight spaces for the entire building. The Department recommends the Board approve the minor modification request with the condition that, prior to the issuance of Certificate of Occupancy, the applicant must provide to the Department of Community and Economic Development a review and approval, a sign rendering denoting parking, a sign rendering denoting parking for the business in a signed letter from the building owner agreeing to have four parking spaces set aside for the business.
Okay, and I just, this is five hundred because it's a special permit modification? Is that why?
Yes.
First to three hundred?
Yes.
There's two checks for five hundred, why is it, why are there two checks, just dotted here?
Yeah, so the applicant, I guess, had brought one months prior, so we could return one.
All right.
Both on March, one on March twelve, one on March twenty, and another one with the application.
Yeah, we had a, I'm Mike.
That's Mike.
We had a couple of different applications, so it could just be crossing.
All right.
Yeah, those checks can probably be returned.
I'll take those. Thank you. Christmas bonus.
I was just confused with all the checks, all right, so.
And you're the money guy, Pat.
No. Go ahead, sir.
Just looking to open up a retail. Currently do wholesale roasting in the back. Like to have a small retail shop where people can come in, Bridgewater, buy a coffee.
And we asked for the site plan, Jennifer, just to show that there was adequate parking?
That's correct, because retail use has a different parking requirement in our zoning, so we require that they show that they have the adequate space, which they do. I believe that the condition that was proposed is just to confirm that those spaces will be set aside for the retail use, so that there's no question that we have the parking for the retail use.
Is there a problem with not in those spots?
With parking?
Yeah. No. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have one question, I was just curious, so besides coffee, will you be serving any food, cooking?
Anything that's possibly prepared, I'm not looking to get into baking or any of that sort.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Any public comment on the application? Do we have, so we just need one motion where it's a special permit to accept the minor modification, and to accept it, approve it, deny it?
Correct.
So do we have a, a motion to accept the request to do the retail use of coffee as a minor modification?
With the condition?
Well, they're just doing-
We're just doing the minor modification, then we'll do the, whether we approve it or deny it, correct? So do we have a motion to accept this as a minor modification?
I'll make that motion to accept it as a minor modification.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the request for minor modification?
Let's go move.
With the condition?
Discussion of conditions, parking. I'll second with the condition of parking.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Right? With the conditions proposed by Elijah for the marked parking?
Right.
And a second by Lisa?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we have, is that all we have?
The last one.
Let me just clean this up here. Is this the plan? All right, so we have a, another item on our, our agenda, the zoning ordinance that the, I guess the council is going to be considering on Tuesday?
Yes.
This is not a public hearing, but they sent it to us for our comments.
Correct.
Okay. So it's not a public hearing, but I will allow for a public comment period. We can't engage at all, we'll be happy to listen to your comments. Just where it's not a public hearing, I just ask that you try to limit it to three minutes. And I don't, we're just, are we even, are we just-
Sure, so if you want, I can give you a brief background and description of what's been proposed. So the council met on this, on June, I believe it was twenty-sixth, and met on your original proposed amendments that you, when you met with the CEDC in public hearing, you recommended back to them at that time, that I believe there was some discussion amongst the councilors about different aspects of the proposed amendments, particularly marijuana testing facilities, and whether or not testing facilities should be separated out and allowed more broadly in the town, other than the restrictions that we had recommended be placed on, on them. So they had asked that we, myself and the town manager, look at that option, so we came back with some recommendations that, proposals that they allow marijuana testing facilities by special permit in all commercial or industrial districts within the town, and that there be no limit to the number of special permits for testing facilities only. Cultivation and manufacture would still be limited to the two special permits to the Elm Street, as referenced in your previous hearing. Based on the, the, as well, Council Clark, and myself through the town manager. So that was the, that is the proposal that they're asking you to comment on, since the proposed allowance of testing facilities in commercial and industrial districts, and that there be no limit to the number of testing facilities. And they will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday evening on this.
Okay, so it's not a public hearing, but I'll allow public comment if that's the will of the Board, so is-
Could I just ask a question first? Could you just go through the rationale of the council?
That's a loaded question. I think, yeah.
No, I mean, I don't quite understand.
I mean, I wasn't at that council meeting, I'm, so I'm only gleaning this from what I read through their minute, their draft minutes and what, you know, I've been told from people that were there, but I believe it centered around the fact that testing facilities are clean facilities, and, you know, typically good, you know, businesses in the town and would be, you know, welcomed additions and good taxpaying businesses, and that they would like to see more testing facilities in the community. And, I mean, that's all I really know, I don't know any more than that.
I'm just curious, and I'm just, I'm total novice here, is there a need for a lot of testing facilities if, if-
I can't answer that.
Yeah. I'm under, I just don't understand the background to this, that's all. Yeah.
I can't answer that.
So do we want to, is there anybody not open to allowing public comment for three minutes each?
Go ahead.
Okay, is that, okay, so if there's anybody that'd like to speak on this, just keep in mind, it's not, it's not, yep, come on, it's not a public hearing, so you can come up. We won't be asking questions, though, I think that's the way we should handle it.
But because we are recorded, you do need to speak into the mic.
Yeah, so it's not a public hearing, but we'll certainly ask your input, so.
Jennifer Smith, I live on Boxwood Lane. Did you hear that sigh? This is exhausting. This has been going on for over a year now. We, this town has voted no back in November, weren't twenty eighteen, November, voted no on the sale of recreational marijuana. Here we are, November twenty eighteen, and we're still discussing this. Every couple of months, it's a new proposed amendments. Now they want marijuana testing facilities? I'll tell you why they want marijuana testing facilities, because there's a lot of money in marijuana testing facilities that would be great for theory and alternative compassion services, and there's not many in the state, I think there might be one right now, maybe in Milford, I'm not sure on that. But this has gone on far long enough, I mean, they care about the children here, enough is enough. I mean, how many times do we have to come up here, disrupt our lives? I thank you for all your service, but I just, what are we supposed to do here? Our hands are tied, we're not listened to, it's, that's all. Thank you.
Could I, can I ask a question?
Sure. I ask, well, I think we have to be careful, because it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
So I think you should ask Jennifer or Elijah. I guess I'm outside of my, I'm allowing public comment, but, so public comment, we're technically not supposed to engage, correct?
Correct.
So we're not supposed to engage with public hearings either. All right.
Come on up. I'm sorry.
Taylor Sullivan, two fifty Norland Park. I just want to go back to what she said, I know you can't engage, but you had asked, like, how did it come up at the council meeting, so I think someone brought it up, like, oh, we could have more testing, we could make taxes off of that, and I don't mean any disrespect to our town council, but I don't think they've actually, not only researched it, there's no true oversight over, if you do it online, take a look at California, testing, concern with keeping their cannabis clients happy than making sure the testing is actually accurate. So there's no oversight, we only have control commission in Massachusetts to oversee these, and we don't know yet how well of a job they're going to do to even roll that out. And beyond that, even if testing was this wonderful thing, the residents of Bridgewater have come up here, I don't know how many times, we didn't want any marijuana establishments in our town, that included product manufacturing, that included cultivation, that includes testing. Well, testing isn't as bad as having a retail shop, I agree with that, that doesn't mean there should be no limit to the testing and that we even need them here. There's no need to have marijuana testing here. We can do better having other establishments, such as those people that came here trying to open up a retail coffee shop. That's the type of business you want in your town. Why do you want a marijuana testing facility? Besides that, ninety-four G., Section Three, Local Control, it says you can limit the number of, of any type of marijuana establishment to fewer than the number of medical marijuana treatment centers registered to engage in the same type of activity in the city or town. So we have two RMDs, theory and ACS. We have the power to limit the number of marijuana establishments to two. That's it, one, two, or fewer. So in my opinion, when we're a no on question four town, when we've had residents come up many, many times in the past year and say they don't want any marijuana establishments, why are they even throwing testing out there? I don't understand it. And then getting back to, separate from the testing piece, when we talked about the two special permits, under, again, section ninety-four G., if you're allowing two special permits with two marijuana establishments each, that's four marijuana establishments in the Town of Bridgewater. Again, why do we want four marijuana establishments, the maximum that we would even have to have? You can say two special permits with one each. That just allows RMD, okay, pick what you want to be. Do you want to be a cultivator? Do you want to be a product manufacturer? Pick one. Why do we have to allow them, why do we have to allow four marijuana establishments? In case you're not familiar, if you cultivate, that's considered one business, you're a cultivator. If you product manufacture, that's a product manufacturer, that's a second business. So each type of activity is a separate business, and I just don't understand why we would be allowing two special permits with two businesses each. I, in my opinion, it should be, we should be giving out two special permits at most with one business each. So if they already cultivate, they can continue to do so for recreational. I'm just not sure if people on the council aren't doing their homework, or they just decide to go rogue and ignore the people that have come up here every week, because before December nineteenth, the time that theory and ACS campaigned for all of these pro-marijuana people to come here, there was not one person that came up for six months, from August till November of last year, that came and, and supported any of these marijuana establishments. So I think, I would hope that you guys would go against what the council is trying to do by allowing four establishments and put a cap to, to, to two total, not two special permits with two businesses, just two special permits with one business each. And as far as the testing, I think that should be completely thrown out. There's not even a tester in Massachusetts yet, we don't even know what testing looks like, none of us know. We don't live in California or Colorado where they have testing. I think if down the line, in five years, you find out that testing, nobody knows it's going on, and it's very professional, fine, but right now, we don't even know what a marijuana testing facility looks like, we don't even know how it works, we don't even know who oversees it, we don't know how closely they oversee it. So I think it's very premature to say, hey, we want testing here, we don't want to zone it, there's no cap on it, put them anywhere. I think that's very premature, and I don't, I don't know where the council's mind is at, but I don't think they're doing their research. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to remind the Board that tonight, you're just commenting on the testing facilities, you've already recommended the other items back to the council.
Okay, any other comment? And we know who you are, but if you could just state your name and address, I'd be okay, and try to keep it to three minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Pat Neary, two twenty-five Lakeside Drive, and the previous speakers covered most of what I was going to say, so I'll try to revise my comments. I'm pretty sure you all know that this last-minute item on your agenda is finally being presented to you for your input. A motion was voted upon to send this to you back in June, and it went forward without any input from the Planning Board. It should have been sent to you earlier, and now you're, you're having to make a decision so that they can vote on it next week. Anyway, that was an error, they should have planned ahead, or someone dropped the ball. I want to remind you, as the other speakers did, we were a no town on question four. We didn't want marijuana in our town, but it just keeps working its way back in. Unfortunately, there was, some of, a few councilors have a higher regard for dollars in our town than they do for keeping our town and neighboring towns drug-free, and that's the reason we're still even discussing this. Most neighboring towns have totally banned retail, cultivation, manufacturing, and testing. Once again, I want to mention, as I have before, because we've been coming to these meetings for a year now, and the actual state regulation, ninety-four G., states that you can limit the number of any type of marijuana establishment to fewer than the number of medical dispensaries. If you're going to quote the Mass General Law, the language should not be twisted and misinterpreted to fit the result that the author wanted to achieve. It does not state retail locations, nor does it refer to any special permits. If you're going to spell out that you're going to have special permits, you shouldn't refer to its content as though it came from the Mass General Law, because that isn't the, the language. This language should be corrected before anybody puts it in our final zoning regulations. You may or not be- You may or not be aware that we already allow for laboratories or research facilities in our zoning bylaws. It's allowed in almost all zones excluding residential zones. And all, however, all zones don't require a special permit. So that probably should be addressed as well. If you want to protect our town by having fewer drugs produced in our town, please keep in mind that you can still recommend two special permits and one establishment each. That would give you your two establishments to equal the medical facilities. And that would be probably cultivation. Ultimately, you will have that power, because you will be the special permit granting authority. So thank you for listening to me. Sorry if I repeated what everyone else did.
Any other comment? Questions for Ms. Burke, Veronica?
I do. Sorry to repeat myself. Could you just clarify what's before us right now?
So before you at the moment is to provide comments to the town council on additional amendments to your already recommend, recommended amendments. The additional amendment includes allowing marijuana testing facilities in all commercial and industrial zoning districts, and not limiting the number of marijuana testing facilities.
That's just in a laboratory piece, correct?
Testing facilities only, yes.
This wouldn't fall under lab use or research use, so you couldn't research marijuana in an existing office building the way you...
I haven't, I haven't researched that, I can't. Can't answer that.
I'll make a comment. Well, first of all, it's sort of an introductory comment. I think since this was brought back to us by the council, it should have been a public hearing instead of the way it was set up. I think they are asking something beyond what we recommended there for, a sense of change, and there should have been a formal public hearing. At the same time, there seems to be, and with regard to the proposal itself, there seems to be a lot of confusion about it, at least, that's what I'm, at least I'm confused about it. And based on that, I wouldn't recommend going forward with the council's recommendation until things were actually cleared up. So at this point, I'm, I'm against it.
So are you confused about what the amendment does?
No, I, I understand.
Or around the reasoning behind it?
I understand the amendment, but just the rationale behind it.
Because if you were confused about that, I wasn't doing a good job explaining it.
No, no.
Could I have a question? Could you tell us what the process is going to be going forward? So if the council looked at this at their meeting next week, do they have the ability to pass this carte blanche, even though with all these recreational, that would mean a recreational license, if I'm not mistaken, for every single testing lab in every single zone that people bring a special, there's no limit to the special permits?
For testing, if they passed this?
The town did vote no for recreational marijuana.
For sales?
Yeah. The testing, the question for included testing for manufacturing. The way I understand it is that for every, every, every medical tester needs a license, and every recreational tester needs a license.
That's correct.
So you would be...
From the state.
From the state.
Yeah.
So we'd be, we'd be rolling out and it would be a limitless number of licenses. And there are also two different types of testing laboratories. I understand there's like a laboratory for testing, and there's a standards testing, there's two different types, which this doesn't define in this particular legislation.
Nope.
I wouldn't vote for this. I'd recommend passing this, and I'd like to see a lot more public engagement and discussion. I think it's unfair to roll this out without letting the public have more comment. I know the people here are tired of listening to it, but I think when you start expanding the zones, that this is available, a lot more people will be interested in having their opinions heard.
Can you explain to me what, what it looks like? I know we're trying to figure out what it looks, is this something...
Well, what looks like?
Is this testing something that can just go into an office building, just like they test blood or anything else? Is it very similar to that?
So I'm a town planner, I'm not a marijuana tester. I don't know what a testing facility looks like. And since there isn't any in the state, I'm not sure that, you know, as was alluded to, I'm not sure that anybody really knows. I believe the council, you know, is considering, you know, other testing facilities for other things that we may have in this community. As an example of how a laboratory or a testing facility may operate, you know, typically laboratories and testing facilities are clean, operations, you know, are sterile, you know, they have, they're, you know, inspected by, you know, state or federal agencies, they have, you know, regulations and guidelines around them. You know, I can't speak specifically to marijuana testing, but typically, that's how laboratories work.
Because I'm, I guess I'm against the sale of marijuana and...
Yes, we are not allowing retail sales.
But I think that if I understood it right, and an office building could be built in Claymont, for example, instead of more residential, we could build it a commercial base, you know, it's just like a blood testing lab. I might be in favor of it, but without knowing what it looks like, if it's like, like you wouldn't even know it was there, and they just tested things in a tube, is that what it's like? We don't know.
I mean, I don't know, but I would imagine, it's like any other lab, I would imagine. I don't know, though, for sure. I can't speak to it. I've never seen one, I've never been to one, I've never worked in one. I mean, you probably could Google it and see, you could Google anything, I don't know.
Well, the commercial part of it, use, commercial or industrial, so it could be downtown.
Sure.
Do you think that if we did, and it doesn't sound like we do, but do you think if we did have support for it, that it could be, we should look at what zones it goes into? Like maybe keep it industrial, or i.e., you know?
I think if that's what the planning board wants to recommend to the council, that's what they should recommend to the council.
I would agree, you know, commercial, I don't, did not know what this looks like. I wouldn't want to see one in the center.
I looked it up, I looked up the design, I think the Milford one, and I can't promise you it was the Milford one, but it looked more like a warehouse to me when I saw the picture of it. And I think that there's requirements to keep, like, the product on, you know, that they're testing on site. I was reading some articles last night. I just, I have a lot, I would have a lot of questions about having this added about town, willy-nilly, personally.
So do we need more information?
It requires, the retail side, I believe it requires a host agreement. You can't tax, but there's not a taxation portion on testing or cultivation, it's only on retail sales, so it's not like we're going to get incremental growth from that.
So Ms. Burke, what we have approved already, we've, we haven't approved, what we've recommended to the council already, those amendments, has that been acted on yet?
No.
So what we could say is if we want more information...
So, yeah, you could do several things. You could say you don't want to make any additional recommendations, what you've already recommended is what you're recommending, and that's what you're going with. You could say you want additional information to look at testing facilities, you don't feel that you have enough information to accurately comment on what they are proposing. You could say, we like this, we want this to move forward. I'm sure there's other options, too, but those are probably your three best at this point.
Anybody have a suggestion?
Stick with what we already recommended.
So we made a recommendation, you'd like to just, that was our recommendation, and we do not want to modify it?
That's what I prefer.
You making the motion?
Stay with the recommendation that we had already made back, when was it?
Months.
I believe it was back in early June or late, late, late May. I don't remember the exact date.
I'll second the motion.
So do we want them to provide, to, if they, and then do we want to ask them, just for discussion, do we want to ask them if they want to increase it, send it back to us as another modification?
So I was going to say, just because that's what you're sending back to them, it's completely their decision, so it could still get voted like this. Just, you need to understand that.
So my question is, is do we want to ask them that we'd be willing to listen to it more? You know, we want it to move forward the way we have it, but instead of them just voting it in the way it is, if they're going to go that way, we'd like to have more information and have a public hearing on it? Or do we want them to just, we have a motion, so I guess...
Yeah, we already have a motion, yeah.
So Les, you have the motion with the motion, it's just because now I'm confused, I confuse myself.
Right.
Yes.
You know, I guess I'm fine with that, but I'd be open to, I'd be open to more labs if we had proper information and there's a proper public hearing process.
Patrick, can you speak into the mic?
I said, I think I would be open to more labs if I knew what they looked like, and if we had more information and there was a public hearing process, but I'll agree that we should just stick with the recommendation that we made at this point. Any other discussion?
Is that recommendation you just...
I don't have that previous recommendation in front of me.
It was all restricted to...
I believe it was two businesses, and they could do both.
It was, it was two special permits in total, I believe.
And they could do both testing, they could do both cultivation and...
Yes.
And cultivation and product manufacturing.
They're not allowed to do testing?
No.
They're not allowed to do testing?
No, they can, they can do testing.
They can?
No. Cultivate and produce and test.
Right, that's a state regulation.
That was two permitting establishments.
Right, I understand.
Will not be allowed to do testing up there.
All right, so we have a motion, a second to keep our recommendation from the last time we made the recommendation, as is. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Les, we have minutes from 9:19 that you'd like approved?
I didn't see any.
I didn't send them out in the last mailing, so I would continue that till the next meeting, so I can send you guys the minutes.
All right, so we'll hold that. Any board liaison reports?
I don't know about board liaison, but I can give you a little report.
Good job.
I don't know if anybody has heard, but yesterday, the town was awarded a $3 million Mass Works grant for the reconstruction of Elm Street. The lieutenant governor came and made a presentation, so we're very excited about that. It's, it's great for the community, it will help with job creation and some economic development and some housing, so we're very excited, and it was a great day yesterday.
What are they actually going to do?
They're going to reconstruct the entirety of Elm Street from Pleasant Street to the town line, and include some of the intersection of Elm Street and Pleasant Street.
Wow.
That'd be nice.
What are they going to do with this?
Likely start will be in the spring.
That's great.
Great job.
Wow. That's amazing.
See what happens when we bring Elijah on board?
And extend, and extend that left-hand arrow. And give one the other way, too, to the left-hand arrow.
Great job, Jennifer and Elijah, thank you.
Yeah.
Now we expect more. All right. That was the directors' report, I imagine?
Yes.
CPC did approve money for McElwain.
Did it?
Let him out?
One point something.
One, one point...
Three?
Three, four, five, I believe it was.
Well, we're getting 550 back, correct?
So you're, yeah, you're selling the building for 500 and some thousand, yes.
None of that had to go through the Affordable Housing Trust?
Not yet.
I'm sorry?
They're going to do more stuff.
I believe it will have to, I believe it will come to Affordable Housing Trust, correct?
So if it gets paid back, it will, depending on how it's structured, there may, I don't know how it's being structured. So we're in, we're like last on the list of long funders of this project that will get paid back, so if there's any money at the end to get paid back to us, it will get paid back to the Affordable Housing.
Are all the other pieces of the financial puzzle in place, or do they have a long way to go to get?
No, so this has to be the first, and this will leverage about three times that amount, or four times, no, I'm sorry, what am I saying, 20 times that amount, with, you know, state and federal tax credits and DHCD funding and other funding, so we're the first piece. It's on, in front of the council on Tuesday as well, for final approval from the council to fund as well.
So if they don't get some of those others, it may not happen, so...
That's correct.
Any board member comments? Just wish Tom the best? Take it for the, all right, maybe if... Do you want to adjourn this quick?
Yes.
No, we want to stick around for another hour and a half.
Some of us drive an hour.
Yeah, Jennifer doesn't want to go home yet.
It's only 7:15, my target was 7:30.
Wow.
All right, so at 7:15, do we have a motion, 7:16, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.